Folks, remember to get your cellphones out and turn them off or get them away from the microphones. I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order. If you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marle, council members Gearbaugh, CEO Rhodes, McClellan, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have City Manager Campell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, as well as DPW Director Fordice. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd please sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, noting new business item sixteen dash ninety-seven, it will appear at the, in fact, it's the last item under new business. It's U.S. twelve road construction project staging area. Thank you, Mr. CEO. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we will dispense with that motion. We come to two presentations. The first is Walt Nancy Byers' proclamation. If I could have Walt Nancy join me up front. Let me have you hand me this, okay?
You have to stay for the whole meeting.
Yeah, you've got to stay for the whole meeting.
I already told him he could wait.
So, as I think most of you know, and I think everyone on council knows, this is sort of a bittersweet moment because Walt Nancy are retiring and relocating to Petoskey, Michigan, if I'm correct. And that is, well, first of all, we wish you well in your retirement. We know you'll have a fabulous time. But it is a loss to the community because these two have been civic leaders involved in countless ways for many, many years. And we're going to miss your leadership, we're going to miss your contributions, and all the energy that you bring to this area. And so, in my capacity as mayor, I deemed it appropriate to present you with this key to the city. That my friends at Celine picture frame did just a marvelous job framing. And the Clerk's Department prepared a tribute, and I want to read the tribute in its entirety. And I should preface by saying it doesn't touch on all the things you've done during the course of your life, but it touches on many. I'm going to actually put the microphone down and try my best to reject. So it's titled, "City of Celine in recognition of Walt Nancy Byers." Whereas Walt Byers has played a valuable role in various boards and commissions, including the Planning Commission, the Special Projects Commission, and the Economic Development Boards. And whereas Mr. Byers has been a leader in the Washtenaw County banking community for several decades, and currently serves as the Celine District President of Bank of Ann Arbor. He is also active member of the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce and the Celine Rotary. Both Walt and Nancy have been strong supporters of Evangelical Homes of Michigan, an important nonprofit organization in the Celine community. And whereas Nancy Byers has been an invaluable member of the Celine community and has served tirelessly in a number of ways. She chaired the, excuse me, she chaired the Celine's Art and Culture Committee and has been active with Celine Area Schools, in particular helping the Foundation for Celine Area Schools, to name just a few. And whereas Walt Nancy Byers served the Celine community for many decades and have been active volunteers and generous supporters of their, of their community, their dedication and commitment have improved the Celine community in innumerable ways, and they have received numerous, well-deserved awards and recognition throughout the years. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Byers have been active members of the Celine Business Community, owning and operating Stone Arch, Stone Arch Arts and Events Center. And whereas Nancy's parents, Paul and Jacqueline Tall, were pillar members of the Celine community, Mr. and Mrs. Tall were founders of the Celine Reporter, and their legacy of service and leadership has inspired many in the Celine area, especially their daughter and their son-in-law. Whereas Mr. and Mrs. Byers have decided to enjoy retirement and start a new journey in Petoskey, Michigan. Now therefore, I, Brian Dean Marle, Mayor of the City of Celine, on behalf of the Celine City Council and citizens of Celine, do hereby thank Walt Nancy Byers for their dedicated service to the Celine community and to the City of Celine. With sincerest best wishes for a happy and enjoyable life in Petoskey and for all future endeavors. And as a token of our appreciation, I present you both with this key to the city, and I set my hand and seal to this document on the twenty-first day of March 2016. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Well, what a, what a nice presentation, and thank you, City Council, for having us here tonight. It's nice to be on this side of the table and not that side of the table when I, Jack and I and some of us have been on Planning Commission and EDC. Mayor Marle, it's been a real pleasure to watch you grow and lead the city. Nancy and I are strong supporters of you, as you know, and wish you well and the rest of the City Council. And Celine will always be on our hearts and minds. But now I'm going to get to Petoskey and make a difference up there. Plan to be joining Rotary there soon. About forty years ago, Paul Tall, my father-in-law, Nancy's dad, when we moved here, the very first Thursday I was here working at the Celine Reporter, I was at Lighthizer's at Rotary. And I missed too many meetings since then, although we just got back from a nice vacation and missed a few, right, Rotarians? But, and then Evangelical Homes has been very special to us. Denise is here, does a wonderful job. It's a great organization for our community, provides a lot of jobs and a lot of good services to people. And whether or not I'll get on a board of a retirement home there, I'll probably be looking for a room in the next year or two, so. But Celine has just been a great community for Nancy and myself. Of course, Nancy lived here all of her life, and I've had forty years of good times here, so. We really will miss Celine, but we look forward to Petoskey. And instead of making the two-hundred-and-sixty-one mile trip on a Friday or a Thursday, we'll be up there. So we're hoping a lot of you that we know very well will come and visit us. It's a great city, if you haven't been there, great bike trails, great recreational community, and I'm looking forward to getting involved in planning and different city activities there. Now Nancy wants the mic.
She gets the last word.
But we'll be back. We'll be back here often to visit, so we, we do hope as many of you as possible will come visit us, but we'll be back to visit you.
Thanks a lot. Many have wanted to. So, speaking of Evangelical Homes of Michigan, my friend and, and yours, Denise Ravidu, the president and CEO of the company, is, is with us this evening. Denise, we appreciate your time, and you have something very special to give us, and maybe you'd like to say a few words in advance.
Well, maybe I, maybe I wouldn't say anything but to tell you that without Walt's leadership, Brecken wouldn't be the where, what it is today. There would be the memory center, the purchase of the hospital wouldn't happen without Walt Byers. So, we're very sad to lose him on our board and as a member of the community. So Walt, this is your day. But, and Nancy as well, because they led our capital campaign for the memory center, and helped us live that dream. So, this is on behalf of Evangelical Homes to the City of Celine and to the seniors who use People's Express and transportation. We are giving you a check for eight thousand dollars today to support the transportation in the City of Celine so that it can be affordable for those individuals who use it. So, thank you.
Well, I have said this on, on numerous occasions, that Evangelical Homes of Michigan isn't just a great employer, not just a great corporate citizen, but an organization whose employees and whose leadership find so many ways to give back and put such a strong emphasis on charitable giving and charitable care. And that's marvelous, and it sets you apart. So we appreciate your generosity, we appreciate your friendship, and know that those of us at the City of Celine are some of your biggest supporters and advocates. We want you to succeed, and we feel blessed that you're in the Celine community. So thank you so much, Denise. Thank you, all. Okay, moving on on the agenda, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved to approve, as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing. This is item sixteen dash ninety-three. This is special assessment for fire protection for fiscal year 2016-2017. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, affording the public an opportunity to speak to this issue, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Public hearing is open at seven forty-one P.M. We invite anyone from the public to speak regarding the fire special assessment for 2016-2017.
Moved to close.
Moved by Gearbaugh to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman CEO. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the public hearing is closed at seven forty-two. Finally, this will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt Resolution Number Two, Special Assessment for Fire Protection 2016-2017, approving the estimated amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars for fire protection for fiscal year 2016-2017.
Moved to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dillon. Is that a second from you, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone care to comment?
It should be four-oh-nine-nine-ninety-two, not four-ninety.
I'm sorry. I stand corrected. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any comments on this? Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
I think just the realization is that we know that we're going to a full, a more full-time complement of six firemen instead of three that we've been, and the cost is reflective in this budget, so it's just to add more to the protection and the reality of the change in how we handle fire protection in Celine.
Thank you. I would echo that we have a wonderful fire department, men, a lot of dedicated men who have contributed many, many years of service to the Celine community, and I think we're all in their debt. And Mr. Gearbaugh is right. I think adding three new full-time firefighters will not only improve public safety but also officer safety. And I can tell you, because I was at a meeting from about five-thirty to, to six-fifteen earlier this evening, we were reviewing the first batch of applications that came in for the three new positions. And I can tell you, we have some really competent, quality people, many of whom would be a great addition to the department. So it, it really is exciting, and needless to say, I will be supporting this motion and encourage my, my colleagues to, to support it as well. If there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote then. It's been properly moved by Dillon, seconded by Rhodes, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business, item sixteen dash eighty-five. This is a request from Celine Area Social Services to waive variance fees. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April twelfth, 2016 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel and the February fifteenth, 2016 memo from Patrick J. Little, and to approve or not to approve the request from Celine Area Social Services to waive the zoning Board of Appeals application variance fee in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Moved to acknowledge receipt and to not approve.
It's been moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt and not to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Does anyone from staff care to make a comment on this? Mr. Campell?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You all may recall, this was brought up at the previous meeting with a, with a request to waive the fee, and, and fair amount of discussion ensued. And I confirmed with city, our city attorney's office that, as we talked about, there's a, there's a couple items that would prohibit council from, from approving this. One is the state constitution of, of not allowing, excuse me, not allowing municipalities to lend their, the city credit. And the other is, is also a concern that Mr. Smith has with the U.S. Constitution of potentially violating the equal protection clause. So, based on those two things, the recommendation from the city attorney's office as well as city staff would be to, to not approve.
Thank you, Mr. Campell. Are there any questions for our city manager? Any subsequent discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Har.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, to say that, that my support of not approving the request for variance has, has nothing to do with the value of Celine Area Social Service in this community. It's, is based solely on the, on the legal ramifications and, and considerations.
Additional comments?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. CEO, I'm sorry. Please.
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Har said, and I think that a community is only as rich as the kinds of services it has to provide to its citizens, especially those citizens that can't necessarily afford to provide for themselves. So, I think Celine Area Social Services adds a tremendous amount of value to the City of Celine, and I feel compelled to follow the law, being a person of laws, being sworn to uphold the constitutions. So I will be voting in favor of this motion as it, as it rests on the table, but certainly isn't that in my heart.
Thank you, sir. Additional comments? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge and to not approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item sixteen dash eighty-nine. This is Depot Trail Dedication Resolution. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution changing the name of the Depot Trail to the Wayne Clemens Memorial Depot Trail.
Moved to approve and adopt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Councilman CEO. Discussion. Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
I want to thank the council for considering this and appreciation from the Celine Area Historical Society. They felt that this was a great way to recognize Wayne Clemens' contributions to not only the historical society and the depot and the creation of the farm, but a way of kind of giving his name to what is the idea of really dedication to our community to keep our history and ourself alive, and understanding that without his dedication and services, we would have lost quite a bit of our heritage. And at this point, I think naming this section between Ann Arbor Street and, I believe it's Harris, as the Wayne Clemens Trail will be a great way to recognize his accomplishments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. CEO?
Just that I think it's also appropriate, given the adjacency of the trail to the train depot that he worked so hard to, to maintain and to bring to us, so I think it's a great gesture.
Absolutely. I would just add, I, it seems like yesterday when Mr. Gearbaugh contacted me on behalf of the Celine Area Historic Society with the idea of, of naming something in memorial for Wayne, I, my only regret is that his daughter Penny is, is not here this evening, although the clerk's office did invite her, and she's well aware of, of what, what's happening. And I'm, I'm assuming there will be some sort of dedication ceremony sometime later this summer in which she and her, her family will be able to participate, participate in. But as both Mr. Gearbaugh and Mr. CEO said, Wayne Clemens was really the catalyst at the Celine Historic Society. So much of what that group has accomplished over the past twenty years would not have been achieved without his efforts, without his leadership, without his organizational skills. He did a lot for this community. He is greatly missed, and I'm proud and very happy to have considered him a friend. So I'm very, very enthusiastic about this motion. I think it's a great way to honor somebody who, who did a lot for this community, especially in regards to the, the preservation of our past. Anything else? Well, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by CEO, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item sixteen dash ninety. This is Six Hundred Maple Street Purchase Agreement. This will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated April the twenty-eighth, 2016, from City Manager Campell, and to approve or not to approve the purchase agreement as submitted.
Moved to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman McClellan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Mr. Campell, do you care to discuss your memo of April twenty-eighth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's a long time coming. And, you know, the city's been working with Three Oaks for quite some time on, on the possibility of redeveloping Six Hundred Maple, and, and so a lot of effort on both sides, so certainly appreciate that. But, so, may recall, back in, geez, first meeting in April, last me, meeting in March, first meeting in April, I think, council consensus was to, to choose Three Oaks to redevelop Six Hundred Maple into a, a very quality residential development. So, after working again with the city attorney's office as well as Three Oaks and their attorneys, you have before you the proposed purchase agreement. Be happy to answer your questions as best, as best I can, if there are any.
Very good. Well, as the city manager indicated, this has been a long time coming, but a very exciting development, a very exciting proposal. We're excited to be working with the developer. I think it's going to be a, a marvelous addition to, to the community. Are there any questions for our city manager?
No questions. I just sort of comment, I'm just looking forward to the project moving forward. I think it offers a really unique quality development to the city that is not currently here, so we're excited.
Additional questions or comments? Mayor Protem Rhodes?
I'd just like to say that I, also I'm glad to see that we are increasing the diversity of our housing within our community. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no subsequent discussion, we do have a guest. Do you care to make any comments this evening?
Uh, well, I just, representing Three Oaks, we're just really excited about this. We had another community meeting last week where there was enormous enthusiasm about not just the condo unit for, for some of the D.P. adults, but also for the families to be near them. And we're having another meeting on the twelfth, so there's enormous enthusiasm, and we're really looking forward to moving forward.
Excellent. We appreciate your time here this evening. Ms. Tahar, did you have a comment or question, ma'am?
Yes. So I, I'm also very much in support of this, and I'll just also take the opportunity to, to, to repeat what I said before. I hope the planning process will pay careful attention to pedestrian safety as it relates to this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything further? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item fifteen dash eighty-four. This is Swisher Commercial Real Estate Agreement Renewal. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated April the twenty-eighth, 2016, from City Manager Campell, and to approve or not to approve the request to renew the Swisher Commercial Realty Agreement, excuse me, for another twelve months.
Moved to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gearbaugh. Mr. Campell, do you care to comment? We also have our agent, Tony Caparisi, in the audience. Tony, we appreciate you being here this evening.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, Tony, if you wanted to come up and, we provided, Tony provided synopsis of some of the, in the last year or so, some of the activity for the city properties, but I, I don't want to steal his thunder, because he's certainly doing all the heavy lifting. But, so this is, uh, an extension request, for a twelve-month extension request for Swisher, and, and Tony to continue to represent the, the commercial industrial properties.
Tony, the forester.
Yeah. Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I'd like to congratulate council and the folks from Three Oaks on the council's approval of the, the purchase agreement for the development of the Six Hundred North Maple property. I think that's certainly going to be an outstanding use for that property and add a lot to our A number of you I've not met before, you're actually new to council since, I think it was April two thousand and thirteen, which is when we originally signed the first agreement with Swisher Commercial, which was a twelve-month listing agreement. A little bit of background about, about myself, I'm a commercial real estate agent with Swisher Commercial. Swisher Commercial is the only locally-owned commercial real estate agency in Washtenaw County. We've been in the county for forty-six years. I'm also a Celine resident since nineteen ninety-seven, and I've had the opportunity and the pleasure to deal with Todd and several other city, city employees over the past ten or so years. I've been with Swisher for fifteen years on a number of different types of real estate deals, both res, or not residential, but retail, industrial vacant land sales, going back to two thousand and four with the Sheer Terre Development Project. I think probably it'd be easiest, I, I understand that all of you received my letter, if, if I may, just so that I, I'm sure that I touch on all the points, I'd like to just kind of read it to you if I could, and then open up the floor for any comments or, or questions that any of the council members have. During the past year, we've, during the past year, we began to see more inquiries from interested parties in several city-owned properties. Of course, the most exciting to date is the Three Oaks Group Project at Six Hundred North Maple. After more than a year of talks, planning, and negotiations, obviously, it looks like, and now they have finally executed or will be executing with tonight's approval, the purchase agreement. Also during the last twelve months, there were inquiries on several of the city's industrial park properties. In Salt Trail Park, a local automotive service business investigated the feasibility of building on Beach Court Lot Thirteen, and another developer recently met with the city manager and engineer to explore the possibility of building a fifty-to-seventy-five-thousand-square-foot warehouse facility in Ready's Park Lots Five or Thirteen. On the Michigan Avenue Lot Twenty, we received a letter of intent from a national childcare chain and an inquiry from a regional car wash business. And unfortunately, these two uses were not compatible at the time due to zoning. However, with the city council's recent action to rezone lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty to S.P.A. One, it will now open up new possibilities and the opportunity to market these product, properties for a wider general commercial use. One national retail developer is already looking at the seventeen acres for a possible big box-type development. At the very least, these are positive indicators that demand for commercial and industrial-zoned land is slowly improving, and there may be a growing appetite for new construction. In the years ahead, I will continue to work, or in the year ahead, I will continue to work with currently interested parties and aggressively market the rezoning of the seventeen acres to potential new users. Recently, I met with City Superintendent and Engineer Gary Robel to review and better understand the implications of the zoning change to S.P.A. One. Gary also shared with me the city's older but still pertinent gateway plan, so that I might better understand the spirit and intent of the original vision for future development of this important corridor into the city. As a reminder, city council, and especially for the benefit of recent new council members, I provided a list of advertising and marketing vehicles used by Swisher Commercial to promote the availability of city-owned properties, and I encourage everyone to familiarize yourself with those tools. And certainly, if you have any questions or comments or suggestions about any of those, how any of those might be enhanced, from an informational standpoint, certainly, at any time, you're welcome to contact me either personally, through email, telephone, or otherwise. So again, I look forward to Todd's recommendation and city council's approval of continuing our relationship for at least another year of, for the listing agreement. As I mentioned, now two years ago, when council first approved this agreement, that, you know, this is a long-term endeavor. We were probably looking at at least eighteen to twenty-four months to see any type of activity at all. Actually, the Three Oaks Development Project, I was first contacted and began working with Bill Godfrey in February two thousand and fifteen. So it's actually coming to a culmination here. We're not, we're not home yet. Signing of the purchase agreement is an important next step, but certainly going through the planning and reboot process and touching on all those important design features and aspects are going to be crucial to make sure that we can bring this project home. So, again, with some of the recent, just in the last twelve months, as I pointed on this letter, the context that we've had, it's, the market has changed, is changing, it seems to be improving, and frankly, it's, it has peaks and valleys. It goes up and it goes down, just from an interest standpoint, and certainly from a vacant land standpoint, we were always kind of behind the eight ball from two thousand and nine to twelve, thirteen. We feel that industrial properties, existing industrial facilities- We feel that industrial properties, existing industrial facilities, have pretty much been consumed. What's remaining out there tends to be older, less desirable properties, and so we may start to see, in fact, probably not spec building, but certainly owner-user-type development projects for in the industrial sector. And in the retail sector, these lots seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen are exciting from my standpoint, in terms of being able to go back and really talk to a number of people that I've talked to over the past couple of years. But, you know, Celine is a small community. Demographics are still challenging in certain ways in terms of population, certainly not on per capita income, but population accounts are what a lot of these larger retailers and even some of these national chains, whether it be restaurant or otherwise, are looking for. And so, we'll have our work cut out for us, but I think, obviously, Celine has a lot to offer, and, you know, we're going to do our best to try to bring home another, another win, at least hopefully in the next twelve months. So, with that, I'd open up for any questions.
Tony, thank you. We appreciate that report, and I want to comment publicly. We acknowledge and we thank you for your work on the sale of 600 Maple. Any questions for our guests? Well, that was easy enough. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Any subsequent discussion on this motion? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I know we're going to benefit from the SPA One rezoning, but, again, I, from my own perspective, I'd like to make sure that we're sort of selective on what we decide to place in there, because I don't want to see something that is contradictory, that may damage our downtown or other aspects, but more complimentary to us, like the idea of a regional car wash business. We've actually got a car washed that isn't even open. That would be potentially something we should be directing that kind of individual towards. But, other than that, I look forward to hoping that these properties are really finally redeveloped, and back on the tax rolls.
Very good. Anything else? Well, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Gearbaugh, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Tony, thank you again. Have a good evening. We move on to new business item sixteen dash ninety-one. This is municipal civil infraction definition ordinance. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated April the twenty-eighth from Emily Reisberg, and to adopt or not to adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter Fifteen, Article Ten, Sections Fifty-eight through four oh one of the Code of Ordinances Concerning Municipal Civil Infractions.
Move to acknowledge, receipt, and to adopt.
Second? Moved by Tahar, seconded by Gearbaugh. Do you want to comment on this, Mr. Campbell?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this was brought about by the city's prosecuting attorney, Mr. O'Jack. He has, he has some concerns that, that the current code is not crystal clear on whether or not our code enforcement officer has the ability to enforce the city code. Upon further review by the city attorney's office, they do believe that the ordinance allows that. However, they are suggesting this amendment, so it's crystal clear and no questions whatsoever. So, and this, obviously, we have, in the recent past, we've utilized the Code Review Task Force to do, to review the code, but because this is of an immediate nature and more housekeeping than, that we thought this would be the best way to, so there's, then clear up any questions, and so we can move forward.
Very good. Any questions for the city manager? Any subsequent discussion? Ms. Tahar, please.
I would just say, as member of the Code Review Task Force, I approve of this approach rather than calling a meeting and running it through extras, unnecessary steps.
I echo that. Same thing I was going to say.
If there's nothing further, then we'll proceed to vote. It's pretty cut and dry. It's been moved by Tahar, seconded by Gearbaugh, to acknowledge receipt and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item fourteen dash one thirty-four. This is wastewater treatment plant improvement phase two, pay estimate number eight. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April twenty-second, 2016 memo from city superintendent and engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve the contractor's application for the payment number eight in the amount of seventy thousand, thirty dollars and ninety-three cents.
Move to acknowledge, receive, and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make any comment this evening, sir? Not unless there are questions?
No questions.
Okay. Is there any questions for our city superintendent and engineer? No? Any discussion? This is easy. Well, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item sixteen dash ninety-two. This is water and sewer rate resolution. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April twenty, April twenty-eighth, 2016 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough, and to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution for water and sewer rates effective June one, 2016.
Move to acknowledge and to approve and adopt.
Moved by CO to acknowledge and to approve and adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Ms. Bennet, in the absence of Deputy Treasurer McDonough, would you care to make any comment on this? Of course, this has been discussed at some work meetings, but...
Yep. I'm, as you mentioned, mayor, we have had discussions on this. We have started reviewing the annual water and sewer, the water and sewer rates on an annual basis as part of our budget process. And as we discussed in the work meeting, the proposed resolution will be effective June first of this year, so residents would expect that on their quarterly bill that goes out in September. So, with that said, the other change that will be coming back for you on this would be the fee book changes that Gary's office will be updating to reflect these changes as well. There's any other questions?
Any questions for our city treasurer? Ms. Bennet, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Mr. CO, please.
I just want to thank the treasurer's office for taking the efforts to try and smooth this out over time, as we talked about at the work session. I think it will help our citizens greatly to not have to absorb the impact all at one time, and rather to pay over a brief period, or a brief period of time, anyway.
Additional comments? Mr. Gearbaugh?
As we know, water and sewer are one of our primary infrastructures that we have to continue to repair and provide for, and unfortunately, nothing is cheap anymore. But, at this approach, I know that we're trying to at least give a decent service. We know what's happened in other cities and not paying attention to that, and I think Celine has done an excellent job on this. My one concern or issue was that there were different ways that we could have potentially funded this, but knowing the additional costs and so forth, this is one of the only ways to approach it. Mr. Campbell has explained to us that we could either bond it, pay as we go, or use funds, and we've been doing that for all types of our approach. So, we're taking basically a threefold approach to how we handle it, and unfortunately, this expense came up as part of our big project, and we have to bring it into both our rating, into our rates, and basically address where we're having less water usage being used by some of our bigger users in the city. So, rates will increase, as long as we want to keep our water pure and keep our sewers working.
Additional comments? Mr. Rhodes?
I was just thinking, while Councilmember Gearbaugh was talking, it might be worthwhile for those in the audience and those watching on local television later to be a little more specific about these costs that we talked about that came up in that smoothing effort. So, the major element was an additional seven hundred and three thousand dollars associated with the rebuilding of the sewer main project under Michigan Avenue. And we could have elected to charge the users that entire amount in one year, but decided as a body that we would spread that over a number of years to keep the rate increase down. And so, I'm glad that we made that decision.
Thank you, sir. Anything further? Well, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item sixteen dash ninety-four. This is county resolution regarding road funding. This will be a motion to acknowledge, or excuse me, a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution, and to forward or not to forward the signed resolution to the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, excuse me.
Move to approve and adopt and forward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Well, let me just say very briefly, because I talked about this at our work session, the county is considering a proposal that would put a half-mill on an upcoming ballot and generate funds for road and infrastructure needs. And every dollar that the city of Celine generated would be returned to us. Needless to say, investing in our infrastructure, in our roads, is absolutely critical. It's one of the things our citizens value most. And while this won't meet all of our needs, and while it's not a perfect solution, I think it is a solid proposal, which will, again, not only benefit the city of Celine, but ultimately Washtenaw County as a whole. I previously wrote a letter to the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners in my capacity as mayor, but also as a member of a work group that drafted this proposal. I would still, assuming that this resolution passes this evening, I would still encourage each and every one of you, if you have relationships with members of the Washtenaw Board of Commissioners, or whether, whether you don't, pick up the phone, send a text, shoot an email, encourage them to do this, because this is, this is a good thing. Again, not perfect, won't solve all of our problems, but will give us a lot of clarity and direction moving forward. Additional comments or questions? Mr. CO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the resolve, should it say forward the amount allocated for both motorized and non-motorized?
Let me get to the resolution, Mr. CO. Which whereas are you at?
I'm at the resolve, down at the bottom.
Okay.
We're in the third line there. It says, "I would encourage them to put it on the August ballot and forward the amount allocated for non-motorized pathways." Should we say motorized and non-motorized?
Yeah, probably.
Otherwise, they might just send us the ten percent. I think they're all just got free.
So, to change it then, amount allocated for motorized and non-motorized pathways and trails earmarked for the city of Celine?
You may want to say roads.
Yeah, motorized roads.
Roads.
How about, yeah, roads is even better. How about roads? Allocated for roads and for non-motorized pathways and trails.
Very good.
Any objection to that?
Yes, except...
Change will be made without objection, Mr. CO. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Correct that tonight, thanks, as we went on.
Allocated to...
Allocated for roads and non-motorized pathways and trails earmarked for the city of Celine. So, the only word you're adding is roads. Okay? Change will be made then without objection, as previously stated. Any subsequent discussion on this? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I think this is a great way for us to support the idea of having our citizens vote for this millage. I think there was concerns about how the commission put it in place. I think it was the right decision they made, because we need to fix our roads, but at least this approach that the commission is going for, Washtenaw County Commission, is going to have the ability for us to vote on what we want, and that's the best way to approach it.
Thank you, sir. If there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote then. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Dillon, to approve and adopt and to forward, noting the change. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item sixteen dash ninety-five. This is sidewalk phase one change order. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April twenty-eighth, 2016 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the change order number one of sidewalk repair program, and to authorize or not authorize a change order in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars to the contract with precision concrete cutting.
I'll move to acknowledge the receipt.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt of the April, of the April twenty-six, April twenty-eighth, 2016 memo from DPW Director Fordice, excuse me. Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I do have Mark Monkowski with Precision Concrete Cutting here tonight. I was planning on having him review some of the successes of the program, and then I'd get into the details of the change order, if that's all right with you.
That's good. Welcome you here this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be part of Celine's program, that is, improving the walkability, safety of the community, and, as you've even discussed, another business, how important pedestrian safety can be. This project has been running on time or ahead of schedule, with substantial savings noted to the city in excess of a million dollars for the work that has been performed. That is in correlation to the cost of doing demolish and replace, which is typically a disruptive process, both to the trees and the canopy in your environment and the adjoining landscape. We are able to go through and resolve these vertical separations or defects in the sidewalk at upwards of a seventy to eighty percent savings over that alternative, again, without disruption. As the project has proceeded, we have incurred an overrun in the amount of work that needs to be done. My company did the initial survey that provided the data in order of magnitude estimates for this program. Therefore, we are willing to accept full responsibility and make concessions to the city, so that we can complete this project as it was intended.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fordice?
So, during the course of the project, as, as I was reviewing the work, I opted to include some cuts that were not part of the original scope. So, part of this change order is that, six hundred and forty cuts. These were trip hazards that were on sidewalk slabs that will be replaced for other reasons eventually. So, if you had a vertical separation on a cracked slab, because that needs to be replaced, they were not included in the original count. But, as I was going through and reviewing the work, I decided that it made sense to eliminate that, that hazard and that liability quickly, as we worked through the longer-term process of the demolition and replacement phase of the project. So, that's a significant chunk of the requested change order here. Another portion of it is due to environmental changes. As Mark and I went through and reviewed the first three months of work, we found that there were cuts that needed to be made that weren't in the original survey, because they weren't there at the time of the original survey. So, areas where you have younger trees that are still actively growing, pushing up sidewalk slabs, some areas where there was some evidence that some construction activity had gone on, maybe a heavy vehicle had driven over that sidewalk slab, pressed it down a little bit, so now there's a trip hazard there that wasn't there during the original survey. But, as, as Mark mentioned, we also determined that there were a number of cuts that were there during the survey, but didn't get caught in the survey. So, and that's, those are the concessions that, that Mark mentioned, that total up to over fifty-eight thousand dollars. So, the change order is for additional work directed by the city and additional work created by environmental changes between the time of the survey and the time work actually began.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Again, we have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt. Are there questions for our DPW director or our guests? Mr. Rhodes, please.
Not, not a question, but a comment, and that is that I found the grinding of the elevation differences between the slabs to be very satisfactory. It was, it was almost a pleasure to be pushing snow on my sidewalk and my neighbor's sidewalk without jarring into the slab, so thank you for doing it.
That was really my personal highlight experience, too, in front of the snow blower down the sidewalk and not catching it in the gut on those spots.
I have to say, too, I, it may come as a surprise to many, but I had a friend's dog with me for, for several days, and I'm not an animal person, so that's, that's the surprise. And we probably walked more of the city in the last three weeks than I've walked since I was running for reelection, and it is, it is amazing how much of a difference there is in terms of walkability and, and safety and ability to move with ease. But, you know, obviously, the grinding didn't resolve all of the issues, but a vast majority, and I think anybody could, could clearly observe that as they walk our city sidewalks. So, thank you for your, your work.
Ms. Tahar?
Yes. Well, since we're sharing personal experiences, some of you know I walk quite a bit around the city, and I did actually, I had noticed the, the slabs where there were separations that, on slabs that clearly will need to be replaced, and I think it's a very good move to have them ground now. So, I approve of that.
I just would echo that comment. I know there's, on my street, there was a few sections that were ground down, and I was like, wait, this one really needs it, but it was cracked in half, or, and so I think that it's, would be very beneficial, so that someone doesn't trip and fall on those before they get fixed.
Ms. Dillon, please.
So, what is now the estimated time to finish this project?
Within schedule, which would be by June thirtieth. Within schedule, which would be by June thirtieth. Our target would be to complete by May thirtieth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. CEO, please.
Mr. Fordice, apparently a number of changes took place during this project, as you indicate. What's the rapidity with which we might have to repeat a project like this?
Well, one of the benefits of working with Precision Concrete is they unconditionally guarantee their cuts. So if there's a cut that shows another vertical separation, all I gotta do is call them, and they'll come back and fix it.
Well, there's nothing further. Gentlemen, thank you. We just have a motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve or not to approve the change order number one of sidewalk repair program and to authorize or not authorize a change order in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars to the contract with precision concrete cutting?
Move to approve and to authorize.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Any discussion? Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
I guess I didn't realize we had that conditional guarantee on it, so I think this is a great solution, and even if it does cost us additional resolve, it's great to be able to go back and continue to fix those. Great job.
Additional comments? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
We move on to new business item sixteen dash ninety-six. You might want to hang tight, though, Jeff. Purchase of pickup truck for wastewater treatment plant. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April twenty-eighth, twenty-sixteen memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of a twenty-sixteen GMC Sierra twenty-five-hundred pickup truck with an eight-inch snow plow from Red Holman Buick GMC in the amount of thirty-one thousand, forty-two dollars and forty-five cents for the wastewater treatment plant.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tahar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Do you want to make a brief comment on this, Mr. Fordice?
It's just a continuing effort to reduce the overall age of our fleet. This pickup truck will be utilized by the wastewater treatment plant, and their two-thousand-and-three will be assigned elsewhere. The vehicle that we'd be getting rid of is a seventeen-year-old pickup truck. And the budget, the amount budget, it didn't allow for purchasing a tailgate along with it, so we're gonna work on finding some other funds and getting a new tailgate for this after we take delivery.
Excellent. Any questions for our DPW Director? No questions, thank you, sir. Any comments on this? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about new business item sixteen dash ninety-seven, US-12 road construction project staging area? This is the amendment to the agenda this evening, and of course, you have a memo in front of you. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the letter from Tom Rizner from Hoffman Brothers Incorporated, and to approve or not to approve the request to use the gravel parking lot at the corner of South Ann Arbor Street and Willis Road as a staging area for the US-12 project.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tahar. Mr. Campbell, do you want to make a brief comment on this, and then maybe our guest from Hoffman Brothers can as well?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom, if you want to come on up. So as we all know, the project has begun, and I think as anybody that knows our community and has driven the construction zone, staging areas are a premium, right? I mean, we don't, there's not very much, many places to choose from. So Tom Rizer from Hoffman Brothers is making a request to utilize the parking lot, city-owned parking lot down at the corner of Willis and South Ann Arbor Street. It's been utilized for staging areas in the past for various projects. I believe the most recent one was two thousand and ten Willis Road project that the city has completed. I also know that he also has, or Hoffman Brothers has a staging area at two thirty-seven Monroe Street, right there in the property right in front of, adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. So he's kind of, they're spreading, but it's not big enough for everything as well. So, but I will, with that, I will turn over to Tom, and he can make his formal request.
Introduce myself, Tom Rizer, Hoffman Brothers. I'll be the superintendent, the person on site all the time, from Battle Creek, Michigan. That's where we're from. Pretty much looking forward to this project. It's a big one, and it's, has a large effect on everybody here, and I understand that. At the same time, like Mr. Campbell said, there's not a lot of room out there to store materials while also trying to complete the project. So I'm looking for, you know, we have the Monroe, but like Mr. Campbell said, there's not a lot of room to store all the water main and sewer. So I'm sure there are concerns about my traffic down roads. That being said, by spreading it out, it shouldn't be near as bad. I don't foresee, I don't foresee a lot of heavy traffic from us. That being said, you know, like the letter stated, we'll keep everything clean, keep the dust down. Any questions?
Very good. Any questions for our guest or from staff? Ms. McClellan?
Just a question about safety. This location is right next to a park, one across the street that's more of a child-oriented park, and then another one that's more of hiking trails. Is there an issue of keeping kids and other people off of the stuff that's sitting there? Especially, I'm assuming these are water mains, so they're big, round, cement, fun things for kids to climb in.
Yes, that would be a concern, and we would entertain the idea of some sort of temporary boundary to keep people out.
Anything else, Ms. McClellan?
That's it.
Mayor Protem Rhodes?
I had a similar concern about the safety, being able to secure that site because it will be an attractive nuisance.
Mm-hmm.
Kids and adults probably will be in there. So, you know, if there's some construction fencing, temporary fencing to be put around it with the gates, total access, that would be good. And then for the city manager, do we have an obligation to contact residents in that area about this proposed change, temporary change in usage?
We certainly could, and to let them know that they're gonna see an occasional, you know, piece of heavy equipment or truck, but we certainly could.
But there, let me stick on that for a second. With, I think that's perfectly appropriate and reasonable. Would anyone have any objection to that? No? Okay, so consider that something that needs to be discussed.
And then my last comment relates to the email that I sent out this morning in response to the notice about this coming on, and that is, South Ann Arbor Street is showing wear and tear already, and it's been, I don't know, fifteen years plus maybe since that was resurfaced. And I was glad to see your statement that'd be left in the same or better condition at the end of the project. I would respectfully request that that South Ann Arbor Street from Willis up to Michigan Avenue, or at least up to Henry, be documented, filmed, videotaped, and both parties, the city and Hoffman Brothers, acknowledge that that tape, that recording faithfully represents the condition of that road as it is now. Otherwise, how is one ever gonna know a year from now whether that pothole existed before or not? So we need some recording of it.
To add to that, I, we will have traffic down that road.
Sure.
I don't foresee, you know, because I have the Monroe Street yard, I don't foresee it being heavy, to be honest. Most of the water main is getting delivered this week, so it's probably gonna end up at Monroe, because I don't, and it's more likely that, you know, electricians' vehicles and electrician stuff, there'll be some of that there. I don't think this yard will get that heavy of use either, but I understand.
Yeah, just to be on the safe side, if you have, if you have a recording of what its condition is prior to use.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Having seen that site used at least twice, if not three times, for staging, the concern that's always come up from the neighbors and the residents in that area, because I live on that street and not far from it, has been trash from papers or stuff that's associated with what's shipped and everything. So be aware that you will hear that kind of comments clearly, and that stuff is just strewn around, so keeping it straight, otherwise there will be phone calls. When you talk about heavy equipment, the road does have a weight limit, so are we going to be enforcing that weight limit to make sure that when we talk heavy equipment, it isn't exceeding that limit?
I don't know if they're gonna exceed the weight limit of a garbage truck that trails up and down.
Okay.
My understanding, it is a Class A road.
It was built to Class A standards, which is full-depth base, so basically, basically the deterioration you see is of the surface graveling course due to probably some deficiencies in the top course. And we certainly can take photographs of that. I estimate there's only about a hundred square yards that are in that shape that have been sort of patched to that, you might say, already.
Right. No, I just want to, for my concern is just making sure that the heavy trucks and stuff that people aren't upset coming down, because we do have a restriction on what type of trucks can come up and down that road.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a second motion to approve or not to approve the request to use the gravel parking lot at the corner of South Ann Arbor Street and Willis Road as a staging area for the US-12 project?
Move to approve with the conditions stated during the previous discussion.
I was just gonna ask for clarification.
On what that was?
Right.
That the route be documented?
Be documented, temporary fencing be put up around the storage area, and that the neighbors in the area be notified.
Yeah, that's what I.
And dumpsters or whatever maintained so that any kind of trash or whatever it is is taken care of.
Some sort of trash receptacle be placed on the location. Go ahead.
And one last, appropriate liability insurance.
True. I'd sort of assumed that was covered.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but you're right.
That way it's all official.
Can you reread that, then? Did you get all that?
I have. To notify the surrounding residents that the site will be used for staging area, videotaping of the condition of the road of Ann Arbor, on Ann Arbor Celine Road, and concerns regarding trash, a temporary fencing, and dumpsters maintained, and appropriate liability insurance.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
And one other item about the hours of access and address. I want to make sure that it isn't something happening at five AM in the morning. I'm not sure what we want to do with that type of situation.
Sure, five AM, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So, yeah, the pre-construction meeting hours were scheduled seven AM to nine PM, which is pretty standard.
Everyone, you're comfortable moving that motion that was read by the city clerk, Mr. Rhodes?
I am.
Okay?
Second.
Second by McClellan. Everyone clear on the motion? All right, any discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. Commission committee or task force reports from council members. Mr. Rhodes, please.
Just wanted to mention that the Environmental Commission, in concert with the Fifth Corner Teen Center, put on a very successful electronic waste recycling event this last Saturday. We had, I believe the count was two hundred and twenty-six or two hundred and twenty-eight vehicles that came through, and the rain held off until the last ten minutes. So that was even better. And then the other thing that I have is I attended the River Rays and Watershed Council Spring Meeting as a designated representative for the city of Celine, and among other things that took place at that meeting, Leanne Ring, who is the middle school teacher whose students sample the water in Mill Pond, and they have done that, I believe, for three consecutive years so far, so this will be their fourth. She received an award from the River Rays and Watershed Council for her work.
That's it. Very nice. Additional committee and commissioner task force reports. How about reports or other announcements? Ms. Tahar?
Yeah, a couple of things. Just remind everyone, if you've probably seen this already, that the RIDE, Triple ATA, new services, services have been expanded based on the millage that was passed last year. They went into effect on May first, and I have copies of the spring/summer schedule and guide, which includes details about the improvements they've made and for distribution to council members for the particular attention of those who have certain fear of buses. And secondly, I learned from a member of the Water Resources, the Washtenaw County Water Resources Commissioner's Office, that the Water Resources Commission is, currently has online a survey for residents of the county about recycling and trash and other services, solid waste. It's the Solid Waste Management Division of this office. And unfortunately, I left the card at home that has the URL for the survey, but it's, any citizen can take the survey, the questions. It takes about five to ten minutes, and it's about what services you use, which services you value, which are most important to you. And they'll be using the information from the survey as they plan, work on their next five-year, I think, plan. So I'm hoping that it will, at least, we'll be able to have a link to it from the Celine B. Green website and perhaps also on the city website.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Other reports or announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
And one thing that I forgot to mention about the e-waste event, and that is that the Environmental Commission distributed two hundred and nine bark seedlings to folks that came through, as well as various literature about the environment. And we had from Verizon, two hundred insulated reusable bags that we distributed to people also. So for those folks who came in, they went away with a fair amount of goodies.
Well, the only other thing I have to announce is that Mayor Protem Rhodes and Councilwoman Tahar and I met on Friday to discuss a proposed ethics policy, which is something I brought up in my January State of the City address. We had a good discussion. We hope to work more on that in the next month or so, and I would hope to have something tangible for you to digest and discuss sometime either later in June or July at the very latest. Are there any other reports or announcements? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Isn't there informational meeting for Main Street in this Wednesday or next Wednesday? I just.
There is.
I didn't know, I can't recall the date, and I can't find the memo for it. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of it. They want to know more about Main Street. I believe this was gonna be held at the depot. I just don't have the time.
Email something to the group.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Here it is. On Wednesday, the eleventh, six o'clock in the evening.
So week from Trump this Wednesday.
Correct.
At the depot?
At the depot museum.
And it's open to the public.
Very good. If there's nothing further, in terms of reports or other announcements, we'll proceed then to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward and make common or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Any citizen comments?
Daniel Rifkin with Three Oaks. Just since this is probably the last time we're before all of you, just wanted to, in addition to my comments about how enthusiastic we are about the project, to thank all of you and Todd and Mr. Ruball and everybody for all the cooperation. We're really looking forward to working with all of you and really appreciate everything that you've done for us, so just wanted that to be on the record as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your interest, your patience, and your cooperation as well. We appreciate it very much. If there are no additional citizen comments, is there any other business to come before city council? Please note our two upcoming meetings, and there are no absences to excuse, so the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-seven PM.
So moved.
Moved by Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.